I'm good, how you doing? It's great. Is there something special to do tonight, Mr. McQuarrie? Don't have nobody special to be with, what else tonight? Valentine's Day.
Got a new chair, huh? I thought it was Ms. Clerk about that.
Take your hat off.
This one, that's fine. Thanks.
Y'all ready? Let's get this party started. Mario, you good? I call the order to city council meeting for this February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's five thirty. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilwoman Campbell. Councilwoman Leon.
Here.
Councilwoman Gudaro.
Present.
Councilwoman Julian.
Here.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Harris.
I'm present.
You have a call.
All right, please stand for the place of allegiance and invocation.
God our Father, we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your mercy towards us. Father, in this moment, we pray for your endless blessings. We pray that you continue to pour your unconditional love upon this great city that we call home, the city of Miami Gardens. God, in this moment, we pray that you continue to open up the windows of heaven and pour out your many blessings upon us. It is my prayers that you give my colleagues and I your wisdom, your knowledge and your understanding as we prepare to discuss business that affect our people. Father, we pray all these things, and yes, I name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, thank you for these nice new chairs.
Woo-hoo!
Or should I say, Mr. Manager?
I think it came out the clerk budget.
As long as our bosses are comfortable, we're good.
We're on approval of minutes?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we do have before the Council the January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four regular city council draft meeting minutes for your approval.
Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
They're moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Showing none? Show the minutes approved? We're on order of business. Any items need to be pulled, added, or withdrawn from the agenda?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have, um, add-on item number one, sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian, supporting the Dinner and Learn Saving Your Home Seminar. Without any objection, we ask that to be added to the consent agenda as item eleven point thirteen.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's the, uh, I guess it's a question for the clerk. It's the, uh, add-on items that was emailed. Is that already reflected upon the agenda?
So, the items that was forwarded to Council, it's a day they were updated, updated items, those were already updated on the Council's iPads, along with the published agenda to the public.
Thank you, I have no other questions, Mayor.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I need to pull a withdraw item nine point two.
Nine point two?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item eleven point four and twelve point one.
Eleven four?
Yes.
The other one?
Twelve point one.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For clarification's sake, twelve point one is on the, is a regular resolution, not on the consent. It's already on for discussion for the Council.
So, eleven four?
Yes, 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 eleven four, pardon me.
Can you repeat those again, please, I'm sorry?
Eleven four, wants to pull that.
Okay.
All right, I need a motion on the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
They're moved and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Showing none, show the agenda passed? We're on special presentations.
All right, item six point one, special presentation, Veteran Affairs Advisory Committee Quarterly Report, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, yes, before Council, as part of the agenda, we do have the ninety-day report from the Veterans Affairs. I do have the chairperson for that committee to come before the Council to present their report.
John Ziegler, one eighty-five oh one Northwest Twenty-second Court, Miami Gardens. First of all, I'd like to say happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Same to you, Mrs. Ziegler.
All right. During the past ninety days, we continued to provide food to the community, in particular, the Miami Gardens Senior Center, churches and other outreach facilities. Upon our request, uh, they have now received a freezer for perishable items at the Senior Center. Uh, thank you, Mr. Murphy, for taking care of that for us. Uh, we created a database of veterans that consists of approximately two hundred and eighty-five veterans from Miami Gardens, approximately a hundred and forty-seven additional women veterans throughout Dade County, and approximately another one hundred, I'm sorry, approximately eight hundred additional veterans throughout Dade County in our database. We accomplished this by creating a contact sheet and then standing in front of Walmart, Publics, Home Depot, and networking with other agencies to obtain information. There are approximately thirty-five hundred voting veterans residing in Miami Gardens that we plan to contact. The Veterans Committee held its very first stand-down event on November the ninth, uh, two thousand twenty-three, and we thank all of the city officials and the Miami Gardens Police Department for making the Veteran Stand Down Event very successful. The police car was amazing, thank you guys very much for doing that. Uh, Director Paulette Murphy and her staff assisted in every way possible. Event Director Samuel Randall and his staff did an amazing job putting everything together, and we thank you all very much for your involvement, especially our city leadership. The numbers reflected that we had approximately over, approximately three hundred or more veterans attend the event. Sixty-two vendors from the State Attorney's Office, Miami VA, Miami Dade County Corrections, and many other agencies, including the Miami Barber Institute, that provided ten barbers that gave free haircuts. We were also able to connect with Rodney Baltimore from Hot One Oh Five radio station to do a public service announcement about the Veteran Stand Down, which really assisted us in this matter. We created many partnerships with federal, state, local and private agencies that were excited to work with us, including Greater Good charities who gave us a five thousand dollar humanitarian grant, the Miami Dolphins, Hot Rock Stadium, and many others came out to support the Veterans Event. We have found that many veterans and their families are unaware of how to file claims and benefits, uh, and those that do know are being targeted and charged outrageous fees to complete forms that are otherwise free, uh, free service. We have reached out to Dade County, um, to assist us in this matter, but have received no assistance, so we have taken upon ourselves to kind of do it. But what you have in front of you is a brochure that we contacted, uh, one of the agencies, and they put something together, and then we in turn created the applications and the, uh, file, uh, to claim the file and put it in the back of the folder for veterans. So when we give that to a veteran, they have all the information that they need to go to a veteran service officer, uh, with the completed forms and then file their claims. So that's what, that's the package that you have in front of you. Uh, we hope to partner with the Miami Dade County, uh, with Miami Dade County Gustavo, Gustavo Cruz, the Executive Director, Military Veterans Affairs, and Commissioner Keon McGee, Chairman, um, the Chairman, Dade County Military Affairs, uh, and create a network that will provide valuable information and opportunities for Miami Gardens veterans. We have taken upon ourselves to, uh, to assist veterans in Miami Gardens by providing, uh, them with the initial claim forms which you have in your, uh, dockets. We also plan to partner with the Florida Department of Veterans Affairs and Veterans Affairs Service Officers to conduct a Veterans Affairs Workshop, which would assist veterans and their families on obtaining benefits. We also plan to partner with the Women's of Veterans Affairs and the Florida Department of Veterans Affairs to hopefully host the first Women's Veterans Conference in Miami Gardens and hopefully a military ball. Again, you all have an open invitation, we meet the second Tuesday each month at one o'clock at the Senior Center, and with your support, we look forward to doing some amazing work in Miami Gardens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler, good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just want to, uh, commend the Veterans Affairs Committee for the work that they're doing. Um, they're doing an extraordinary job, and, uh, I think it's so important that we continue to pour, um, into our veterans, um, just as well as many other communities throughout, but our veterans for sure. Um, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you. I know I attended a meeting back about a month or two ago and expressed my sincere appreciation, but publicly thank you and your entire committee for the work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler, for sure. Thank you, Councilman. No other, no other special presentations, we're on public comments. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the back of the card?
Article two, section two dash sixty of the City Miami Gardens Code entitled Public Participation provides that any person making personally irrelevant, pertinent or slanderous remarks or when become boisterous while addressing the City Council shall not be considered orderly or observing decorum. If any person becomes too lengthy, abusive, obscene, and/or disruptive, or otherwise fails to comply with decorum rules, the presiding officer may issue a warning and provide an opportunity for the individual to conclude their remarks in a decorous manner and within the designated time limit, interrupt and terminate the individual from concluding their remarks, bar the individual from further appearance before the City Council unless or until permission is to continue or again address the City Council as granted by a majority vote of the City Council. Order shall be maintained if any person refuses to obey the orders of the presiding officer and is declared out of order, the individual may be subject to removal by sergeant-at-arms.
Council, please govern yourselves accordingly as well. Do you have any written communication, Mr.?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, all written communications received by the Clerk's office has been forwarded to the City Council and will be part, um, put with the minutes as an exhibit.
All right, thank you, I have a few cards. First person up would be Ms. Dorothy Thompson, and then following her would be Rhea Hughes and Linda Mobley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I'm concerned about the problem.
Could you please state your address for the record, please?
Dorothy Thompson, thirty-one eleven Northwest One Fifty-Eighth Street, Miami Gardens, Florida, three three zero five four.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Okay. I'm concerned about Golden Glaze Elementary School. They have these kids there that needs computers to do homework on. Parents can't afford them, and they're not giving the computers to the kids. I just want to know, how are we going to address that? These kids are falling behind because they can't turn their homework, they can't go home and study, because the computers, they don't have at home. And the teachers are telling them they don't have any at the school to give them to take home. And I find that to be a very, very annoying problem. The kids need to learn, and they need to stay on stop of their homework and schoolwork. But without the help of the community, we're failing them.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. You have any other things you want to add?
No, not right now.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Re Hughes, thirty-three thirty-five Northwest One Hundred Eightieth Street, Miami Gardens, Florida, three three zero five six. Again, the majority vote of the Myrtle Grove residents was for the state-of-the-art multipurpose gymnasium, inclusive of an eight thousand square feet community building, a thirty-thirty pavilion, upgraded parking lot with two ADA spaces, existing playground previously upgraded in two thousand nineteen, to two new concrete outdoor basketball courts, outdoor fitness station, uh, walking trail and perimeter picket fencing for enhanced security, which is duly noted, documented and filed in the City Hall since two thousand twenty-two. Vice Mayor, in your column of the December two thousand twenty-two newspaper, Miami Garden News, you stated, "My constituents mean a lot to me. I am able to improve the quality of life for them. I want to serve them so they feel valued. I recognize that a leader, that as a leader and a public servant, people don't get everything they want, but it's important to me that it's a fair process and that they haven't been ignored. The Myrtle Grove residents are asking for a fair process, so we are valued and are not ignored. With what we're facing in today's world as it pertains to one's voting rights, to strip, silence and/or suppress, we, the votes of the people, will speak volumes in our city of Miami Gardens. Words do matter." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy Valentine's Day.
Same to you.
My name is Linda Mobley, address is thirty-two sixty-one Northwest Two Hundred Thirteenth Street, and I am representing North County Citizen Association. We've been here for over thirty years, and we did a lot. And one concern, I'm on the board meeting, a board member, the wall coming into two hundred and fifteenth street from Broward into Miami Gardens, all the way down to like two, two eighth street, is a so-eye. We've been working on this for years and years and years. We still getting answers like our councilperson have been trying to help us, and they're telling her and telling us that it's responsibility of the homeowners. I don't know if it's in their deed, because I don't live on that wall, but if I lived there, I would go downtown and pull the deed and see what's going on. That wall is a so-eye. When I pass by that wall, they're putting up wooden fences back there, it's like boxes, and it look like the ghetto. So when you come into Miami Garden, and they say, coming into Miami Garden, that's supposed to be a beautification. So I'm trying to figure out why we haven't found a solution to that wall. We're trying to do it at the city level, but if we can't do it at the city level, then we got to go up to the county, then go up to the county, whatever we need to do, we need to find out how these citizens can repair that wall without them going into their pocket as much. If they have to pay something, maybe, but the fumes are coming over the wall, trash is coming over the wall. We have seniors that's in tears about that wall. So when I'm listening to them and I can see it, I don't know if everybody else see it, and I think everybody in here have passed by it, we having all these events in Miami Gardens, so why should our city look like that on our main street on two seventh, twenty, twenty-seventh Avenue and nobody cares about it? If you find money to do everything else, why we can't take that money to help that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mobley. Ms. Carolyn Brown?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Happy Thanksgiving, I mean, Valentine's Day. It's my birthday, but happy Valentine's Day. Um, my address is twenty thousand Northwest Thirty-Fourth Avenue, and my concern is about the wall. Um, we come to the last councilor meeting, and they tuck us out on the outside, and we come to agreement. The first, um, um, thing they gave us, they gave them, um, was, um, it was August the ninth, two thousand twenty-three. I didn't ever dare receive one. When I received one, I received one January the tenth, two thousand twenty-four. I guess they added me in, they first gave the first five and then they added me in.
What, what was it that you received?
Um, a code enfor-
Okay, okay.
About the, about the wall.
Okay, okay.
That because I didn't know, I've been living there for twenty-nine years, that that wall belongs to me. And they told us we had to paint the rear of the wall on the outside of one ninety-ninth. So we come to agreement out there with, um, one of the code enforcers, he was a man, and then we had the, um, what, um, what this man named?
Public Works, Tom?
Public Works. And we come to the agreement, if we paint the wall, we won't be helped for the fine. We went the next day and we painted the wall. I received a certified letter on the sixth to be picked up from the post office, and it was a Ms. Hannah saying I have to pay that two hundred and fifty dollars. And we done painted that wall, we painted that wall the next day. The meeting was on a Wednesday, and we painted the wall that Thursday with our own paint. We painted that wall. And now they saying I'm being fined for it still. And I want to know why am I being fined for it when we come to agreement to paint it?
All right, Ms., you see Ms. Bispar right here?
Mm-huh.
She, she'll speak to you about that.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Garvin Adams?
Garvin Adams, thirty-four hundred Northwest Two Hundred Street, Miami Gardens. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First meeting on January, I was here, and we discussed the same thing Carolyn is discussing about the wall on one ninety-ninth street. Uh, you had given me to a gentleman, I think it was Kevin. Kevin took my number and stuff, never called me. I came to the second meeting, and, uh, while we were here with Ms. Carolyn and two other ladies that's in the, in the six houses that got written up, they took us outside, and just like Carolyn says, we finally came to the agreement, this is what we're gonna have to do. That evening, I bought the paint after the meeting. Thursday, I parked my truck, because I told you that, uh, one ninety-nine is not easy place to stand up and paint. And I painted three walls, three properties, mine's, Ms. Carolyn's, and another lady up the street. That same afternoon. Uh, I don't know if I got a registered mail, I didn't get any in the thing, in the, in the mailbox, but Ms. Carolyn got it. And I decided to come here again, because I don't know if I'll get one, or if one was served and I didn't get the paperwork. The mailman never brought anything for me, so I don't know. So, letting you know, it took two weeks for your guy to try to get in touch with me, which he didn't until I sit down here last time. And that's when they took us outside, and it was a, I kind of messed up with, uh, when we was too loud and stuff like that. Right? But we fighting for what I think is right. Up the street, there's a lady that I spoke to before, just a few moments.
Yeah, go ahead.
That told me that, uh, the city, somebody in the city brought them the paint, and they had to paint it, that's up there by Thirty-second Avenue area. I went walking and talking to everybody. Yes, I like to see the wall clean, I like to see the city clean. So I'm here to make sure that I didn't get fined, just like Ms. Carolyn. So I guess I gotta talk to that lady.
Yeah, you gotta talk to the lady. But I, I'll, I'll look into it too, but you, you do need to talk to her.
Got you.
All right.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
One more thing, I'm sorry.
All right.
Can you tell me what this Formula One Fund is all, all about? Every time I read something here, they want to take money out of the Formula One to help somebody, but not to help clean the city?
Hmm.
Can you tell me what the Formula One Fund is all about?
You, you, you can go back outside.
See her too?
Yeah, see her too. See her too. See her too. And, and we'll have that discussion with you, we'll have that discussion with you. All right. Okay. Ms. Dorothy Morrison? Before you start, Ms. Morrison, do you need to go out there and see her too? Okay.
No, sir, thank you.
Got to catch her before she leave.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Same to you.
Thank you. My name is Dorothy J. Morrison. I live at thirty-five thirty-five Northwest Two Hundred and Thirteenth Street. I am an original pioneer from New Liberty City who had to be bused to school in order to get a decent education. To the esteemed Council and fellow citizens, I come for you today to speak for those who can't or won't speak for themselves. I too, these people have no knowledge of city government and how it works. I too am guilty of sitting back for many years on the sideline. I was a civic-minded person, but not civic-active. That has changed as I question my fellow civic groups and organization as to how we got to where we are. I am a bit disappointed about the ordinance to create and enforce the school zone speed limit. Did anyone oppose this or simply jump on the bandwagon? I am sure when Shirley Murray Gibson envisioned this city, she didn't expect for the powers that be to stick their financial knife into the citizens at every chance. This ordinance should not go through. When was the last time you heard of a child being struck by a car while going to school? So you say, what about the revenue? What about the revenue? What about the money you already have? How much is enough? People do not like being stopped by the police. We are the ones driving these streets. This runs people's blood pressure up and puts them on a heart attack notice. So you say other cities are doing it. So if other cities jump off a cliff, you're going to jump off the cliff behind them? It's time to stop capitalizing off the backs of simple, ordinary people. Can I please finish?
Yes, finish, finish.
Every day, people who are just trying to simply make it. What have you done for us lately? We are catching it from all ends. Our democracy is being threatened, our history and ancestry is being snatched from us right up under our eyes, and we are being raped by the stadium. The Grand Prix race was shoved down our throat with a sham eight million dollars to the city, and the red light camera project still remains unpopular. Everything going out and nothing coming in. To pass this ordinance only throws another log on the fire of life. I urge you to please rethink this and do not pass this ordinance. If you want to do something positive, make public service announcements urging people to slow down and use their attorney signals. We need for you to show us better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Showing no other public comments, public comments are closed at this time, we're on ordinances for, there are no ordinance on for first reading, we're on ordinances for second reading.
All right, item nine point one, an ordinance of the City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, amended chapter twenty-four of the City of Miami Gardens Code of Ordinances by creating article five entitled School Zone Speed Limits. To enhance enforcement of speed limits within roads, properly maintain the school zones, provide for adoption, repurchase, repeal and halt ordinances in conflict, provide severability clause, provide for inclusion in code, provide for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian.
Is a public hearing on these count? Is a public hearing on these count, on this item? And Ms. Morrison, I would place your comments under this public comments here. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Any written communication on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor, no written communications on this item.
All right, I need a motion on item.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns from the dais?
I just got one.
Go ahead.
I support this item wholeheartedly, especially after attending a memorial service at Norland Senior High School of a kid that got mowed down on his way to school. And as a parent, that I have to stand outside and watch my daughter walk home from the school bus as people do 90 miles an hour coming down our street, I wholeheartedly support this item. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's necessary that we talk about facts. And one of the biggest things that our city is currently experiencing, and not just a Miami Gardens issue, but a nationwide issue, is traffic homicide. Traffic homicide is at its all-time highest, and people are losing their lives daily. Our officers here in the City of Miami Gardens, when they're on, when they check in, five minutes on a shift, they're responding to traffic homicides. So when you talk about creating lasting and stronger communities, preserving our young people's lives is at its top priority. And when you, when you're able to enhance and combat issues by encouraging individuals to slow down, drive the speed limit, that's all we're asking. It's not about a profit. It's not about increasing the tax revenue here in the City of Miami Gardens. It's all about saving lives and creating a more efficient community so that we all can continue to live in a much safer community. So I as well support this item 100%. I voted for it the first time, and I look forward to voting it so that it can go into fact. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I too would like to co-sign. As a lifelong educator and principal of a school, I have seen the devastation that can occur when people are running late and children are crossing the street. And more often than not, they don't cross alone. They cross in groups. And that makes it even more dangerous for people who have decided, for whatever reason, that they're not going to adhere to the flashing light, yellow light, that they're, that the traffic is just too much for them, and that they've decided they're not going to wait. Whether you're talking about a senior high school, you're talking about a middle school, you're talking about a K.A. center, you're talking about a pre-K center with mothers and fathers and grandmothers dropping their children off, and they can't cross the street. We also have crossing guards that are standing in the middle of the road, and many of them find themselves at danger because people don't want to slow down for families going to get an education. So yes, I do support this. And I support anyone who does not follow the law being ticketed.
All right, any other questions or concerns from the dais?
Well, I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you very much to my colleagues for seeing the importance in the lives of our children and saving lives. Ms. Morrison, to answer your question, you said, when was the last time a child was struck while going to school? The last time that a child was struck in the City of Miami Gardens going to school, like Councilwoman Leon said, was this past October, November. I was there when we had to go to that parent's house to tell her that her child was not coming home. The way that she cried, knowing that her child was not coming home because he was riding his bicycle going to school to get an education is the reason why we are supporting this here. If people would follow the law, then we would not have to create this. But we've given people chances over and over and over again, and nothing is being done. So this is not to come after people, just to come after them. It is to simply say, we need to enforce the law. And the laws that we currently have in place are not being adhered to, so we need to add some enhancement to enforce the law. Because trust and believe, if it were your child, you would be right here in front of the city council asking, why are we not doing something? So I wholeheartedly disagree with you, and I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this item, because our children's lives matter in Miami Gardens. It seems like nothing we do in Miami Gardens is ever good for anyone. Can somebody come up here and tell us about the work that we are doing and the lives that we are saving and the police officers that are risking their lives every day? Come on, folks.
All right, any other concerns? Any other comments? Showing none, Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilwoman Campbell. Councilwoman Leon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Igadaro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Julian.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Harris.
I vote yes.
All right, there are no resolutions for public hearing. We're now on to the consent agenda. Item 11.1, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Authorize City Manager to Negotiate and Execute All Contracts as Necessary for the Production of the 14th Annual Juneteenth Celebration to be Held on June 15, 2024. Waiving Bidding Procedures For Purchases Made in Connection With This Celebration. Authorize City Manager to Exceed His Purchasing Authority as Necessary for This Event. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Katrina Wilson. Item 11.2, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating $3,435 from Councilwoman Reggie Leon's Formula One Community Fund Account to Support Community Fundraisers Non-Pro-Ton, Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Reggie Leon. Item 11.3, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Reggie Leon's Formula One Community Fund Account In Amount Not to Exceed $539 in Support of the 8th Annual Miami-Dade County Public Schools District 1 Black History Showcase. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Reggie Leon. Item 11.4, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, oh, sorry, that was pulled. Item 11.5, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Shannon Igadaro's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount of $2,500 to the Jamaican Nurses Association of Florida to Assist City of Miami Gardens Youth from Parkway Baptist School to Attend the Youth Outreach Retreat. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Shannon Igadaro. Item 11.6, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount Not to Exceed $700 Non-Pro-Ton for the Hispanic Heritage Month S.A. Contest Awardees. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian. Item 11.7, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount Not to Exceed $1,200 for the Miami Dolphins Challenge Cancer Initiative. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian. Item 11.8, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount of $350 Non-Pro-Ton in Support of the 2023 IET Community Trust Gala. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian. Item 11.9, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount of $850 Non-Pro-Ton for Holiday Food Distribution. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian. Item 11.10, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Public Affairs Special Events Account In Amount Not to Exceed $670 Non-Pro-Ton in Support of Little Red Dress Event Honoring Community Members. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian. Item 11.11, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Authorize City Manager to Issue a Purchase Order to Kelly Tractor Co. for the Purchase of One Backhoe Loader in accordance with the Florida Sherers Association Bid Number FSA 23-EQU21.0. In Amount Not to Exceed $121,660. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by City Manager. Item 11.12, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Authorize City Manager or City Clerk to Execute and Test Respectively Amendment Number 1 to the Agreement Between the City of Miami Gardens and SFM Services, Inc. for Additional Cleaning Services, a copy of which is attached there too, as Exhibit A. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, this is sponsored by City Manager. Item 11.13, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Allocating Funds From Councilwoman Linda Julian's Formula One Community Benefit Account In Amount Not to Exceed $2,000 in Support of the Dinner and Learn Saving Your Home Seminar taking place on February 20, 2024. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Linda Julian, and that is your consent agenda.
Need a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Showing none, show the consent agenda pass. We're back at 11:4.
All right, item 11.4, A Resolution of City Council, City of Miami Gardens, Florida, Authorizing an Allocation of $5,000 from Councilwoman Shannon Campbell's Formula One Community Benefit Accounts to Cover Incentives Associated with the City of Miami Gardens Police Department. Gun Buyback to be Held on Saturday, March 2, 2024. Provide for Adoption, Representation, Provide for an Effective Date, and this is sponsored by Councilwoman Shannon Campbell.
This item was pulled by Councilwoman Julian? Councilwoman Julian?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so I had a, I had a couple of questions about the gun buyback, Councilwoman Campbell. And so I see that the gun buyback event is taking place, and you're seeking $5,000 to, for the event. How did you derive to that amount?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Through the city manager. I'm gonna have Chief Pratt come up and speak.
Governor Noel Pratt, Chief Miami Gardens Police Department. The monies are, are used to purchase gift cards to give to those who actually turn over the firearms to us.
So how did the $5,000, how did we derive? How did we come up with $5,000? Like, how do we know it's gonna be $5,000, $10,000, $2,000?
You don't, you don't know exactly how much monies to come up with. You just, you just purchase a certain amount of gift cards, whether it be $200, $100 worth, what have you, in order to give over to those who turn over the firearms.
Councilwoman Campbell, what do the incentives look like?
Speaking to the mic, I can't hear you.
What do the incentives look like?
I believe Chief just answered the question.
Well, no, so is, are, what increment dollar amounts are people going to be awarded? Is it $100? Is it $200? How do you decide who gets what amount?
I don't decide, the police department decides.
It depends on the, the type of firearm that's turned over at that time. And it could be $200 for, let's say, an AK that we may say $200 gift card is given to that person that turns over AK. Depends on the workings, the inner workings of the gun. Depends on a lot of different things.
How have you guys funded this in the past?
We have acquired monies from various organizations, businesses, in order to purchase the gift cards in the past.
Okay. Well, for me, there isn't a clear description on how the funds are being spent. But furthermore, Councilwoman Campbell, I find it interesting that you voted no to accept the Formula One Memorandum of Understanding to allow this city to get funds that would provide economic and community benefits that directly support city residents and businesses. And now you're looking to use those same funds that you voted against. And so I have an issue with that. Furthermore, I remember when those of us who voted in favor of receiving the funds, we were chastised. I can't forget how some council members on this dais led the effort to have those of us who voted yes recalled. When we voted yes, that was a yes to improving programming in Miami Gardens. That was a yes to providing services to our residents. When you voted no, that vote was a no to programming, such as what you have presented to us today. And furthermore, gun buybacks have not shown to decrease gun violence. So I won't be supporting this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Couple of points. I don't decide how much, whether it's gift cards or whatever incentives. That, that is determined by the police department, and that's been done nationally. That's the first point. Second point, the MOU, and we've been down this road before, became a part of what was put in the fiscal budget for this city. I voted yes on the fiscal budget. If you look at the budget, the Formula One is a line item in the budget, and I voted yes. So that's the second thing I want to address. The third thing is, this is something that is, which is the most important thing of all. This gun buyback is something that's needed with all the gun violence that we have had recently, and it's been going on for a while. We've had an increase of our young people getting their hands on guns that are in people's homes. And they're either accidentally shooting themselves or intentionally right here in our city. That's the most important thing of all with this gun buyback, is to get guns off the street. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the item.
I have some discussion.
I have some questions on it as well.
I have one ready. Go ahead.
I guess my- Yeah, I wanted to ask Ms. Mayor to the chief, the, this initiative that you all are doing, how frequent do we do it as an agency, as a department?
Since I've been the chief here, we've done it on about three occasions, we've done it.
Okay, and it's always been essentially this framework of partnering with organizations or, and I guess I'm trying to get to the funding source of it. How has we, in the past, funded initiative?
Various organizations have partnered with us in the past. We've had a couple of sororities that have partnered with us in the past. Various churches that have partnered with us in the past. But the, the whole point of this, this program is to make sure that we get the illicit stock of firearms out of our neighborhood.
Got you. Thank you.
Mayor, and this might, through the mayor to the manager, this is a very serious issue when we talk about gun violence. And I wholeheartedly believe that we need to do everything that we can to eliminate and eradicate gun violence. But, Mr. Manager, can this be done through your, the council member's special account? Can they use those funds for this?
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Councilman Leon, yes. Councilman Leon, yes.
Okay. So if we can, if Councilwoman can use her special accounts fund for this, and it's that near and dear to her heart, then I would recommend, I would wholeheartedly support it. I just don't support this funding source. But if it's that serious and the matter that she spoke about, I can totally get behind it, she's using her special events account.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Chief, thank you very much for your phone. I think the issue of guns, gun violence is not just prevalent in our city. I know that you, along with your department, and I salute you for being the first female chief, and honor you in this Black History Month, you're doing the best you can, and I truly believe that it is through programs and incentives, such as the gun buyback program, that this will provide a more or less holistic approach to fighting crime and gun violence in our city. It's gonna take not just law enforcement, but it's gonna take other community stakeholders, businesses, our residents. And so I think this is an excellent item. I wholeheartedly support the item. I wholeheartedly support and also applaud the Honorable Councilwoman Campbell for not thinking it robbery, to partner with our police department. The item has been moved, and so I second the item. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The donation of this, where does it reside? Like, does it go to the police department?
Yes.
Yes, it goes, it goes to the police department. We purchase the gift cards, and then when the individuals come through, it's like a process. They come through a line, we obtain the firearms, and they get a gift card. We don't ask any questions or anything like that. The whole purpose, like I said, is just to get the guns off of...
And so if there's a remaining balance, what happens to that? Does that remain in the pot for a year, or it just stays there until it's fully extended?
It stays there, and it allows us to do another gun buyback at another time.
And so in the past, how much has been spent on gun buyback?
It varies. It varies.
I mean, not on just one, but I'm saying annually, or?
It varies because it depends on how many guns that we get in, and how many gift cards are issued out. So it varies. It could be 2,000, 3,000, it could be on up. It really just depends on how many guns we get in at that time.
Through the mayor to the chief, you say we've done this three occasions?
Approximately three occasions since I've been here.
What typically is the turnout? Like, how many guns are you collecting?
Could be from 25 to 30 guns. It really depends. There was one occasion that one gentleman actually had, I believe, over 50 guns. He was the gun collector, whatnot. He decided he wanted to turn in his guns, and he turned in all those guns.
Mr. Mayor? I think that the gun buyback initiative is a great idea. This is not something that's foreign to the city. This is something that's been done before. I just don't approve of the funding source. So let me just be very clear. I don't think that this should be coming out of the Formula One money, when, when we agreed for that money to come into the city, some people were in opposition, and that is their right. But at the same time, in order for that, those funds to get on the budget, we had to vote yes to agree to accept those funds.
All right. Any other questions?
Well...
Go ahead. I don't have them moving.
So now, so now, if, let's, 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 so now, if we are saying that the allocation of the Formula One is by, by, by Councilwoman Campbell, that this allocation isn't sufficient enough, then is, is there something that she can submit that we can approve that's sufficient? Or, you know, just say, you know, these are the allocations that we think are sufficient, or, I mean, are approvable? Or how do we move forward in this way so that either these funds are appropriately allocated for, like, the wall?
Good idea.
You know, the wall that, that, that the area needs to be painted? Or, or, or the other wall on 200th Street that need to be fixed up? The seawalls that need to be done? I mean, what I'm saying is, if we, if we thoroughly believe that the vote no restricts the right of this member to use the money, then this council has a responsibility to begin to outline the ways in which the funds should be allocated in the greater good of the resident, of that, of that residential seat. And I don't know, I don't, and somebody have to tell me if that's, that's within our right or limit, or whatever have you, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To, if I'm incorrect, maybe the city manager or Madam Attorney can correct me. Exactly what you just said, Vice Mayor, the funds are already allocated. And it clearly states it should be used for a community initiative. So your statement is accurate, but members of this council have this thing in their head because it's the Formula One money, and they got this, this idea in their head because I voted with the people. The people didn't want Formula One, and there was a MOU that expressed what the dollars were supposed to be allocated for, which is a community initiative. Each, we fast-forwarded, checked the records. It was determined by this council, this council, that each member would get $50,000. $50,000, and I voted for that, yes. And it was placed in the budget, and I voted yes for the budget. Just when you look at Congress, even in Washington DC, you have a lot of elected officials that vote no on initiatives and funds and X, Y, and Z, and they still reap the benefits of it. It was determined by this council that each council member would get $50,000 to do a community initiative, and I was a part of that council that voted yes. So now, because some people that sit up here has this thing, oh, well, she voted no against the MOU, but I voted yes on the budget, and I also voted yes to the projects and what the money would be allocated for, for each seat. That shouldn't have nothing to do with nothing.
Now, you know, I, I would, I would...
Listen, we've already discussed all this, and there's a motion, and it's been seconded. So we're gonna go ahead. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Wait, one moment, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I just want to hear what Vice Mayor has to say. She was gonna say something, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
I think we should go ahead and vote on this item. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Agudaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
No.
Councilwoman Julian?
No.
Councilman Stevens?
No.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Mayor Harris?
I vote yes.
Osha Fels? Three, four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I also think it's necessary that we speak about the funds that was allocated to Seat One as well as Seat Three for the Formula One Community Benefit Funds. There are, there are infrastructure needs and projects that need to be funded in assisting, as it relates to the Sept of the Sewer and the Seawall Program that I've been championing. And I'm not just speaking about just those funds. I also have funds that I have not used in my seat that I'm willing to work to address the infrastructure needs within those areas. So maybe if we can have a conversation at a later date or time, but I definitely think to ensure that we utilize the funds that my colleagues and I did vote for to receive from the Formula One Community Benefit Plan, because we did not vote yes to allow the race to come to the City of Miami Gardens. Let's be very clear about that. We voted for an MOU because the authorization for the race to come to Miami Gardens was not in the, not in the hands or the decision-making of the council of this city.
Absolutely.
So I want to make sure we are clear of that, because we keep putting this false narrative out to the community as it relates to what this council did, and that was not the answer. So I definitely think maybe at a later date, for the sake of Love Day today, that we talk about the allocations of those dollars so that we can continue to improve the quality of life for our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Hold, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna respond because...
Hold, 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 hold. I give you an opportunity to respond.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
You know, as Councilwoman Campbell spoke and talked about the funds and things like that, she made me, she made me think, and we heard Ms. Mobley and the other three residents talk about the, the wall that's literally right there in front of the stadium, which is their district. So at this point, I would like to make a motion that we take the $50,000 from that seat and use it to redo and beautify that wall.
Mr. Mayor?
See, I have...
Hold on. Wait a minute.
People didn't want to let me talk.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mr. Mayor, can I be heard on that?
Yes.
That's a formal type of thing to do, to reallocate funds, and we would need a resolution...
Resolution on that.
To do that. So somebody would need to bring an item to reallocate funds from the budget.
Okay. I'll bring that item to reallocate those funds to the wall.
Allow her to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's, we need to do some protocol etiquette. Let's be clear here. When we did the vote, we should have been done with that. Let's move on. That's number one. Number two, it's already written, and we voted on it, passed, that each seat, residential seat, get the $50,000. So now we gonna play the game, so now you wanna attempt to reallocate. People in the audience and that's watching on TV, y'all better pay attention, because it's on. I've been sitting up here, I've been quiet, and then now, we need to make sure that...
Hold on, hold on.
No, I'm talking. You not gonna out-talk me today.
Listen, listen.
You not gonna out-talk me today.
All right. Okay, both of y'all.
You not gonna out-talk me today, because you been doing it, I get cut off.
Hold on, hold on, Councilwoman. Hold on. Now, we gonna do this decent and in order.
Well, let me finish my thought, and I'll be done.
I'm gonna allow everybody to say what they need to say, but we gonna do it decent and in order. Now, go ahead and finish.
First of all, we need to move on, because it, it is evident that this is a personal thing, and it's okay, because I'm ready. If you only knew. And like I've said before to another council member, if you can dish it, you better be able to take it. You are not, it's written, and I'm gonna say it again, I want the public to make sure they hear what I'm saying. It is written that each residential seat get $50,000. When we allowed one council member up here, Linda Julian got a $190,000. She got $140,000 for rap and her 50. Do the math. And they're gonna deny me funds to do something that's for this community. Let the record show that, and I'm done.
Councilwoman, I don't know, I don't know if, if she received that money from Formula One money.
I don't care. We voted on it, and it's done. Y'all voted yes on that rap for her, y'all, because I voted no, and she got 140 plus the 50, that's 190 all day long. And you denying me 25 for a fair chance initiative, and you gonna deny me 5,000, but it ain't me. It is not me you're denying. You denying a seat of area to be denied that needs the work. Let's keep it real up here. 25 and 5 is 30,000, but everybody else gets 50 and 190 in her case. Let's, let's talk about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on. Now, I don't know that to be... $190,000 came from Formula One?
Yes.
No, I don't think so.
That's not true.
Formula One.
May, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I do think this. I think that somehow or another, we've gotta give direction about how the expenditure of the funds... Kenan, I understand what you're saying, but you understand what I'm saying? Because, because, because right now, there seems to be an opinion throughout that somehow the funds, we have to be good stewards over how it is expended, particularly when there's a general feeling that the funds that have been allocated equally were not necessarily supported equally, right? And so I'm, I'm not here to go back and forth on the issue. I would like to be in a position where there is, there, there is a fairness and equity in how we approve the expenditures of those funds, and what are qualified expenditures, and somehow or another, that, 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 that fair and equity is, is, is in play here, okay? So I don't know if that's something that the city manager can, can, can help facilitate, and, and maybe find a way to bring some type of policy with the attorney or the charter officers. I, I don't, I don't know how to do it, but I do know that we can't do it this way. We, I mean, we, we just can't. So if, if somehow or another, there can be some facilitation of how the funds can be distributed, allocated, and recommended for subsequent approval, that would help us to be able to, when we get to this place, to move in, in a concerted way. Is, is that, is that, is that possible, or no?
Yeah, we, maybe we can do that by, as I suggested earlier, by way of a workshop at a later date.
We had a workshop on this.
Right, right. But we did, we did, Mr. Mayor, but clearly there is some disagreements as it relates to how we're moving forward. So instead of, you know, instead of continuing this conversation, we need to have a workshop so that we can discuss how we want to move for, moving forward.
I think, I think in order to do that, it helps us with both, I think it helps us with both the law, I think it helps us with both fairness, I think it helps us with both, for, for a stronger representation.
Absolutely.
I support that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Because we, we had a workshop, just like you said, we had a workshop.
All right, well, we, we need to move on to this agenda right now, so we've already voted on this. We've already voted, let's move on.
All right, we're now into Item 12, Resolutions. Item 12.1, a resolution to the City Council of City of Miami Gardens Florida, amending the bond implementation plan as it relates to Myrtle Grove Park. Attached here to Exhibit A, authorize the city manager to amend the bond implementation plan, provided for adoption representation, provided for an effective date, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Katrina Wilson.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna go down here today.
We still gotta go on. Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Speaking to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. First of all, let me begin by saying to those members that are present at the dais regarding the Myrtle Grove Park and Pool renovations. I know that there have been a lot of comments and questions about Myrtle Grove, and I want to be deliberate today and speak to some of the issues that I think that have come from the public here, as well as to try and answer any questions that you all may have directly about Myrtle Grove. From the beginning, I have said I am a product of Myrtle Grove. I grew up in that community. And as a little girl, I was always at Myrtle Grove Park, and I took my swim lessons there. And so the issue for me is very much so a personal one. And one of the reasons why I serve as a resident, representative of, for council, the council seat there, but I am also a resident there. My family has lived more than 50 years in Myrtle Grove. But Myrtle Grove Pool, as you can see up here, is about aquatic harmony. It is about the harmony between its people, the people that it serves, and the community, and the experience of those people with water. It empowers us, and it, and it takes us to look at how swim, recreation, education, and water-based therapeutics are actually an asset to our community. Some time ago, when we initially started with the bond implementation, Bunch Park was a park that was furious and fought furiously for their right to have a pool. The genesis of that came from racism, because many of the people that moved into Bunch Park never had pools. They grew up in times when the pools were segregated. And as African-Americans moved into the city where most of the pools were, and the other people moved into the suburbs, the pools were left abandoned. They were left unkept, and money was no longer allocated. And it wasn't because those people could not swim. To a large extent, it was because they didn't want to have a mixture of the people together. And so the people in Bunch Park were fighting, but they were not just fighting for the right to swim. They were fighting for the right to have harmony in a place where they had been denied. And so now, when we take a look at Myrtle Grove with this opportunity to bring water, aquatics back into the Myrtle Grove community, we have to look beyond just what the cost is. We have to look beyond the fact that maybe we ought not have water, because a few people say they don't want it. Because it's not about the few, it's about the future. And yes, I did say in the article that I am a voice for people. I'm a voice for dissenting people, and I'm a voice for people who believe in... I'm a voice for dissenting people and I'm a voice for people who believe in what they believe in. And just as people have a right to stand here, I have a right to stand here as a resident and I have a right to stand here for the speakers of non-English. I have a right to stand here for the children who can't get up to the podium. I have a right to stand here for the parent who has to work today. I have a right to stand here for the senior center, senior, uh, person who lives in front of, uh, Myrtle Grove Park and says, I want it. I have the right to stand here in front of the men who are there every day. Every Sunday. Who, like me, grew up there. And I have a right to stand here in front of you based on those residents who said, we don't want it. So, today, what I hope to do is to capture for you, and really quickly, those things that I believe that are going to be and bring aquatic harmony to, um, Myrtle Grove. The overview is that Myrtle Grove community will benefit immensely from a visionary swimming pool project that addresses the vital need for swim education, not only in the Myrtle Grove community, but in all of Miami Gardens. Next. Why do we need a pool? In summary, the Myrtle Grove, it's not just a recreational amenity, but it is a multifaceted resource that addresses critical issues such as engagement and cultural empowerment. And it has the potential to positively impact the lives of residents and contribute to the overall vibrancy of the community. First of all, when you take a look at a pool, it saves lives. It saves lives. You're gonna see in this slide two little boys who died last year. They were twins. One got in the lake and he started to drown. And the other child jumped in to try to save his brother, even though he knew that he could not swim. And so, both of them lost their life. Ask the mother whether or not a pool is something that you'd like to have. Whether teaching them to swim is something that we'd like to invest in. Approximately two hundred and thirty-five people worldwide die from drowning annually. Drowning is one of the among, among the leading cause of unintentional injury-related deaths. Drowning is one of the leading causes of death for children and adolescents globally. Leading cause of death of children. Not cancer. Not diabetes. Not gunshot. Drowning. They're drowning. More children ages one through four die from drowning than any other cause of death. Children ages five through fourteen. Drowning is the second leading cause of unintentional injury and death after a motor vehicle crash. So, more children are dying than they are in a crash. Every year in the United States, there are an estimated four thousand unintentional drownings, which averages out to be eleven drownings per day. Eleven children. Now, people may say that's not a big deal. But would you give up your child? Do you want it to be your grandchild? Do you want it to be your neighbor? Eight thousand non-fatal drownings, that's an average of twenty-two non-fatal drownings per day. That means they don't die. But what does in fact happen is that they end up going to the hospital and sometimes, as a result of not drowning, they experience brain damage because of the lack of air and oxygen to the brain. For every child under the age of eighteen who dies from drowning, another seven receive emergency department care for non-fatal drownings. Nearly forty percent of drownings treated in emergency departments require further hospitalization and victims often suffer damage to their brains. Contributing factors are the lack of swimming skills, inadequate supervision, a lack of barriers like fencing and around bodies of waters, and they are common contributing factors to drowning incidents. Common factors. And so, when we look around in Miami Gardens, do we see any of those factors? I think I heard on the news where a toddler was almost about to drown. Non-barrier factors, next. Swim education programs and why are they important? Learning to swim is not just exercise, exercise or recreational fun, but it is a life skill for all ages. I learned how to swim in Myrtle Grove and I thought that swimming was something like walking. And then I got in the pool and I can't even float no more. If you say it's because I gained weight, I'mma have to urge you. But, but I, I can't float. And what I've realized is that swimming, to continue to be able to do it, is that you gotta do it. You gotta be able to get in there and you gotta continue to practice. You see, no one has ever died from not being able to play basketball. No one has ever died without, you know, because they can't, they didn't play football or soccer or tennis. But people die when they don't know how to swim. They die when they don't know how to swim. When we take a look at why this whole swim education is important, because it also addresses the health and medical condition, physical therapy, injuries for veterans. Athletes are in this town, the Super Bowl, we just had it. They're, they're gonna take a couple of months off and a lot of those athletes will converge on South Florida because they will get the training and the treatment and the water therapy here as they prepare for their season to come. Not just football players, baseball players, soccer players. This is becoming in Miami Gardens, an athletic center. So, we have seniors who were at Betty T. Ferguson in large numbers because they were excited about the water therapy and the pool that that, and, and the swimming and the water aerobics and how easy that would be on their bodies to be able to go in and exercise. It's job creation. Today, I was on Facebook and you'll see the image later. They have two hundred and thirty black women that are firefighters. And you know what most people don't know? Is that a requirement for the job is that you know how to swim. The other day, I was watching the new, the news and a car went off the highway. And the people that had to dig them out were police officers and firefighters. How can you dig them out and you don't know how to swim? So, when we talk about swimming, we're talking about job creation, not only for fire, firefighters, lifeguards, pool maintenance, hygiene, swim instructor, swim coaches, aquatic managers, and that's just to name a few. When we go to education, swimming lessons and general water safety, collegiate and professional competitive swim. Howard University twenty twenty-three won their division conference the first time in thirty-four years. One of America's leading and oldest black universities is now competing globally and nationally because they dared to swim. And who's to say that they won't go on to become Olympic champions? We established partnerships with our local schools. I know Dr. McKinney, who was at Scott Lake Elementary, partnered to have a pool brought into the cafeteria to teach the young children how to swim. Why can't our parks and recreation go pick the babies up and take them to the park and teach them how to swim? It's not necessarily a function of education to teach them, but it is a function of municipal government to offer that. Next. These are the young men that I, and women that I refer to from Howard University. Their instructor was a student at Howard who came back to become coach. And people looking at me, Reggie, like me and you. We back as council people in our seat in the city that we grew up in. You understand? And so, our children are gonna come back because we're gonna hand them a city. That's the legacy. And part of the legacy is what was given to me when I was swimming at Myrtle Grove. And they deserve the right, they have learned it in the place we call home. Next. I don't believe, see, these are the ladies. Now, ain't that a sight? And I bet you two hundred and fifty dollars that one or two of them from Miami Gardens. Look at them. And that could be a little girl in the third grade right now. Twenty years from now, walking in the pool. And so, when we look at it, I want you to see what I see. I want you to see the children looking up into the lifeguard's eyes. I want you to see that that pool right there is in South Dade. And guess what? It was a pool that looked just like Myrtle Grove, but they took it and they renovated it. They didn't change the building, they didn't tear the pool, the whole, uh, park up, they renovated the pool. I went down there to see it and what the gentleman told me is that they can't keep the children out. That the test scores have gone up because the parents say, if you wanna go to the pool in the evening, then you gotta study, get your work done, and then you can go swimming. The lifeguard is created because they learn how to swim and then they become lifeguards. Dr. Bridgette McKinney was a student here in Miami Gardens that got a license to become a lifeguard at Brentwood Park. She went on to Bethune-Cookman College where on the beach, while she was a student, she earned extra money as a lifeguard. I want you to look at this picture that said Norwood Park. And Councilman Leon had a swimming event there. And you see seniors and you see children in, in another photo and you see everybody was gathered at that pool. So, I was talking to some of the residents and they said to me, "Councilwoman, we can have so much fun out here." And I say, "Who is we?" And they said, "Us." I said, "But this is for the children." They said, "Uh-uh." We gonna be out here with our kids. That's the Miami Gardens way. Family. Togetherness. Unity. Next slide. So, why water therapy services and why is it a must for our aging community? I got up this morning and I thought I was gonna have to fall back down because I'm aging. And walking in the water probably is gonna be better for me than on the pavement. Colleges and universities around this country are installing pools and aquatic therapy for their students so that stress maintenance can become a part of how they manage themselves. Florida Memorial University, St. Thomas University, both are looking for opportunities to have their own aquatics essentials right on their own campuses. And yet, we don't wanna build one in a park that has one. Next. Here, our seniors can get water therapy, our veterans can get water therapy. If you have an injury as an athlete, you can get water therapy. The facilities can be utilized for profitable means so that folks can use water therapy to, for their healthcare. Next. This is another way, when we take a look at how this pool would look. As you see, you can see the slide in the background, you see the umbrellas, you see the, uh, rows of, of swim lines. When you take a look at African Americans in water-based sports, the access facility, two facilities is one of the greatest hindrances. There are cultural barriers because, you know, at the end of the day, most African Americans have had a lot of trauma when it's associated with water. When we take a look at our Caribbean brothers and sisters, they don't have the same problems that those in America do. So, unequal access to education and swimming and training programs contribute to lower participation rates. Next. I wanted you to see an overall aerial view. The reason why I wanted you to see it is because, once again, if you go to Myrtle Grove Park, it's the same park. It's the same pool. It's the same facility. Only it's renovated in South Dade, it's renovated in Perrine, it's renovated in other communities. And we can do the same. You see the benches there, you see the, 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 the competitive lanes. You see the young children's waiting pool, you see the sprinkler system and, and, and thing on to the side. This is what we believe that we can have in Myrtle Grove. This is what we can see. And I don't necessarily believe that it has to be either or. I believe that it can be and. I believe that it can be and. I am not here to stand in opposition to anyone, but I am here to stand in inclusiveness of everyone. Next. So, these are some of the other water features that I believe can be a part of Myrtle Grove Park. And I believe that we can bring anything into Miami Gardens that we so desire to do so. All we have to do is have a will to do it, to see it, and to make it happen. Next. But more importantly, as I said, it's about them. It's about the children. In the face of climate change, in the face of let's clean our beaches up, in the face of having our community be a community where our children can walk almost to any place that they wanna go and take advantage of what our taxpaying dollars are paying for. And this is not an extreme ask, it's not a, a, a huge thing that we should desire to do. This is normal. All we have to do is say we're gonna do it. I'm gonna do my very best to bring a pool to Myrtle Grove. I wanna see and I wanna make a correction on a couple of things. I had said I wasn't gonna say nothing, but the Lord told me to say it. All right? And that's this. Yeah, we did a survey. We did a survey that went out and it was slanted, at least I felt. You'll say, "I'mma bring a pool," and then you say, "I'mma bring a, a state-of-the-art gym." You sent it out to a percentage of the residents in an envelope that looked like it wouldn't come from the city. And as I brought it to the attention of administration, they agreed. But what I did wanna do, I didn't want any problems. So, I said, "Let's go on through the process." Because I don't want conflict with my residents. I'm not afraid of it. But that's not the way I rule. A role. I still don't want conflict, but I do want truth. And so, I'm gonna advocate for what I think is right for the community. And that is that today, what is before you is an opportunity for us to see that we're gonna go ahead with the field house. Right, Mr. Clay? And maybe what we're gonna do is we're gonna leave a plot of the land where the pool is supposed to be. And I'm gonna touch and agree with the father on this because I know that whatever he ordains, it shall be. That the children of Myrtle Grove deserve a pool. They deserve a pool. We have five. And right now, we're down to three. We have Betty T., we got Norwood, and we have nothing on the west side. People say it's two miles away to get over to Bunch Park, but the ride is forty-five minutes on the trolley. Our children should have, be a walking distance of their aquatic dinner. Okay? And so, I think that, um, I wanna say thank you to my council members for giving me your time and your attention. I wanna say thank you to you. And I see some of the gentlemen from Myrtle Grove, how y'all doing? Thank you for being here. Okay? Thank you for being here, okay? In every step of this idea, the community's need for a pool has been my driving force. Your ideas, your feedback, and your enthusiasm will shape this project in ways that we could have never achieved alone. I want to thank you for your time in seeing the vision of a more inclusive, vibrant, and empowered Myrtle Grove. And together, we are creating something truly special. I believe that. We invite you, I invite you personally, to share your thoughts, to ask your questions, and give us your ideas. My prayer is that this project is a collective effort, and your voice, it matters to me. And once again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart and for the hearts of our residents. And together, we are making a brighter future for Myrtle Grove. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor?
I need the motion on that first.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's open for discussion.
Yes. I must say that after that presentation, Madam Vice Mayor, I'm ready to go swimming. But I... I definitely think that the proposal, the options that is before us as it relates to moving forward with what we have in place and saving space for a pool to be installed later down the line once funds are secured and identified and things of that nature. I definitely think that is a great, um... A great idea. When you talk about building, that's typically what happens for the future, where you add on to your homes, you add on to the land in which you own. So I don't see that being an issue at all. And I support that, and I think we should move forward with it. I think the community, we've heard the conversations time and time again. We've heard a percentage that said, "No, I don't want a pool." I've personally have spoken to a number of individuals that say, "I do want a pool. I do want to see it happen." And I think the plan that is before us is answering both needs. It's moving forward what's in place, and it is answering the need to the pool. So I support it. And again, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for holding us a little longer on Love Day. I greatly appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I do agree with your statement when you said the west has been neglected because it has been since 2003. You know, nothing has really been done on the west side of the city. So I do agree with you when you make that statement. However, when I read, um... The cost, so it's saying the cost of Phase One, if we redo it according to the new way, is $7,349,000, both 25. And then Phase Two is $9,198,720. So that's for a total of $16,548,000. Where are we getting this money from to implement this if it is to pass?
Right now, on the west side of the highway, which I, I... Sometimes I want to call it a desert. Because when we take a look at the impact that COVID had in terms of slowing down our development, and as such, we were supposed to have a STEM center on Risco Park. We're not certain if that's gonna happen because of the inter-local agreement process. So those funds really could be reallocated. Okay? It doesn't necessarily mean that those funds would have to be allocated, you know, for a STEM center. I'm not sure. That's the manager will have to work through the process of determining, once we move through the process, as to whether or not those funds would go, where they would go, and whether or not they would, could be used toward the pool. Right? The other part of it is, is that I also believe that maybe there are ways that we can privately name the pool. Maybe get some organizations who would want to co-sponsor the purchase of the pool with us. And so I'm willing to work for the fundraising aspect of that so that we can maybe offer naming rights or something like that for the Myrtle Grove, for the Myrtle Grove pool. Now, the cost of the pool went up exponentially, as like I said, because of COVID. Before, it was a $3 million project, and now it has more than double. But, um... It's just a matter of whether or not, I think sometimes, whether or not that's something you want to do because when I go around, the county pool's coming up everywhere. So somebody getting them.
So my next point is, where is the funding gonna come? If we, if this, you said the cost was like $3 million already? We are, because it's already, and maybe the manager can answer this. There are dollars already allocated in the bond to redo, replace, renovate Myrtle Grove Park. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? I'm sorry, through the mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That is correct. There's $7.3 million allocated for the Myrtle Grove Park as it sits today. Yes.
So with the addition of what Vice Mayor is proposing, that's not enough to do what is being asked to do? The $7 million X amount of dollars?
The $7.3 million that is allocated is for the current project that was a part of the implementation plan for the general obligation bond projects. The remaining funds, as the Vice Mayor has indicated, will have to come from somewhere else, either by naming rights, fundraising, grants, or things of that nature. So the remaining nine and change, maybe 10, will have to be done in another manner. We don't have that money currently available in the general obligation bond. However, as the Vice Mayor has stated, if there's something that you guys want us to look into as far as the current plan, we can look into that as well.
Okay, so we have seven, but we need nine more on top of that to complete this project? Okay. So... I'm, I'm, that's a lot, that's a lot. I'm just questioning it because if we have dollars already allocated, let's stick within what we have in the $7 million. Because my issue is, again, we're asking for an additional $9 million that we, you just said we don't have. So if it's written somewhere, and maybe this item could be adjusted to say where we're gonna get that $9 million, I could support it. But as is written, if we need an additional nine, and I can't even get $25,000 to do what I need to do for my constituents and really the whole residents of Miami Gardens, it ain't just seat one area, actually. And we trying to talk about $9 million? Make it make sense.
Well, well, here, 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 oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. You know, I don't, I don't really disagree with you. I don't. Because I buy what I want, and I believe in what I want, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not outlandish with it. And so I think that at this course, it might be a good idea to direct the city manager to come back with a proposal, and we can work together on it, sir, in terms of how we are going to make up the difference with what we have. Is that fair?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor would have to direct me on that if that's what Counselor wants me to do. And I'll respect Vice Mayor. I would have to get that as a vote from Counselor to move in that direction. I will say this, and hopefully the mayor and Counselor members can appreciate it. After today, I think it's, in all fairness, it's time for us to move forward with at least Phase One of the Myrtle Grove project. And I would ask that whatever we decide to do in the future regarding the additional monies for the pool, let's address that, let's deal with that. But after today, I think we need to move forward with the Myrtle Grove project as approved in a general obligation bond implementation plan. And then we can come back and discuss what needs to be done moving forward with the $9 million for the pool and the other amenities that the Vice Mayor has presented tonight.
Let me, let me say this, ask this. In the resolution right now, as it reads, we're moving forward with, and this, I guess directed to you, Mr. Manager, we're moving forward with the $7.3 billion to go ahead and start Phase One of the park, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
No, no, thank you, Mayor. I had the point of clarity as well because I wanted to make sure I was on the same page as it relates to what the item is reading because it was two different conversa, uh, two different things that's happening. The item is based, it is saying to move forward with Plan A, I mean, with the, what's already in place, and then we collectively, the administration, whomever, can work to implement Plan B, which is to install a pool by a way of securing, fundraising, working with private sectors, or identifying, identifying the funds elsewhere.
Correct.
Am I, are we, am I saying that correctly?
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, you are, Councilman, and I would encourage you to make that a motion.
Well, I was just trying to figure out how what he said is different than what I just said. No, no, I'm dead serious because it made it seem as if I was telling you to do something that wasn't on the resolution.
No, 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 no. I was just clarifying everything. I think you both, I'm on the same page with what you guys are saying, that we're gonna move forward with the project and move forward with identifying funds for the pool. I just want to make, I wanted to be clear that's what we wanted to do. That's why I'm asking if that's where we are. You've said, he's said, I think the mayor and everybody seems to be in agreement. I think let's just make a motion and move forward. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so let's go.
I'm ready to move forward, yes.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah.
Because I want to make sure I'm clear, okay? So as it is written with the update, because we did get an update, okay? When it talked about the economic feasibility, it mentioned the additional $9 million. So I want to make sure, if you're saying, and what Mr. Stevens is saying, I'm sorry, Councilman Stevens is saying, what we're voting on right now in this, in this space is just the $7 million to get going what's already in the bond that's already been approved. I want to make sure because if we're talking about an additional nine, I can't support it until we come up with a plan of action to say this is what we're doing to get that, whether sponsors, companies, namings, whatever. I want to make, because the way the update reads is saying something different. So we got an update today. So I want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm voting on in this moment.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
The recommendation, I believe, that the Vice Mayor has asked is that we move forward with the original intent of the general obligation bond implementation plan. And that plan with funding is $7.3 million. In addition to that, I believe the Vice Mayor has expressed that we also move forward in finding ways to fund the remaining portion, which will include the pool and other amenities, to the tune of somewhere around $9 million. All I'm saying is, as your manager, I'm supportive of that, and let's, let's move forward because I think, and the other thing I'm employing is, let's go, let's do it so we can get started on the project. Because one of the things I think all of us know, that there's a project being completed, worked on, groundbreaking, et cetera, it's easier to get money that way, knowing that you're moving in a positive direction.
I just want to be clear, though. No, I'm dead serious about this because I, no, I'm dead serious. I'm serious now, I'm serious as a heart attack. I want to be clear that we're talking about a two-phase project, right? And that two-phase project is going to be secondary, the second part of that is what we're directing, what I just asked to be directed to you, right? And that was that you were gonna take the leadership along with me as I sought to bring to the table additional funds. But this is really, the totality is Part A, and it's Part B, which is subject to change. Is that correct? Is that correct, sir?
That is correct. I will work with you, Vice Mayor, and any other Counselor member that wants to be a part of this in making sure that we identify funds for Phase Two of this overall project.
Mr. Mayor? So Vice Mayor, I think that this is a phenomenal project. I think that an investment in our kids, an investment in our seniors, an investment in our community will always yield the greatest return. This question is for either you or for City Manager Benson. I'm looking at the first to second line in the item, and it says, "This amendment to the VIP, the bond implementation plan, would include a phased approach to Myrtle Grove Park contingent upon." And so those two words, I have questions on. I just want to make sure that if, contingent upon identifying additional funding sources, if the funding sources are not identified, Phase One still moves forward, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if the funds are identified, if the funds are identified, then there will be spacing within the project to complete Phase Two?
That's correct.
Because with construction, you start to build, and then there's a bunch of moving parts. So just to make sure that one is aligned with the other, and that it could work either way.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, that's correct.
Okay.
Point of clarity, Mr. Manager? Based, based on what Counselwoman just stated, so contingent upon, so if the secondary source or an additional source isn't identified after you do your research and try to identify a second source to do Phase Two, if it's not identified, will Phase Two, will the city be held accountable to move forward with Phase Two? Will it start, that's, that's my, because contingent upon, if we do not obtain the funding, let's say we don't get that $9 million, what we need for Phase Two, since it says contingent upon? So will we be liable, meaning the city, to move forward with Phase Two since we already began with Phase One, based on how we're gonna vote on this item? Or it's gonna be a no-go for Phase Two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to clarify something. Contingent means we need to have the funds to do the project. So if we don't have those funds, that phase will not get completed.
Okay.
Correct.
And I, can I add to that, Mayor? Not only that, Counselwoman, that has to come back to you, the funding. Once the funding sources are identified, whether it be naming rights, whatever it is, you, it will have to come back to Counsel to accept those funds to move forward at that point, once they've been identified. That's how we receive money, by resolution. Thank you for clarifying.
All right. All hearts and minds are clear now?
I just have one other question here. So if the STEM center does not get built on Risco Park, the allocation of those funds in residential seat four, go where?
If that does not happen, then we would have to come back to Counsel and have a discussion with Counsel regarding the allocation of those funds.
Are those funds, since they are already allocated for residential seat four, designated to remain in residential seat four?
No. So that would be, that would, I don't think so. I would say no, but I think that's something you would have to discuss as a Counsel.
So in other words, what I'm hearing you say is that the allocation of the, for the STEM center at Risco Park, should that not take place, that would be subject to go anywhere in the GOP and not on residential seat four? When we have said the west side of 27th Avenue has not had the kind of park renovations that they should have? That that would be subject to be removed?
What I'm saying is, I don't think you can do that, but that was a conversation I think the Counselors should have. And if by whatever means necessary that that comes out that you can do it, then that'd be a recommendation from Counsel to the Administration to do.
I'm kind of confused then. I'm a little confused, I'm a little troubled. Wait a minute now, hold on. Because if you're telling me that you can't do certain things with general obligated money, and yet you're telling me that they can take the money out of one seat and put it wherever they want?
I think those funds were designated for a particular project.
In residential seat four.
In residential seat four. So if you reallocate those funds for another project?
In residential seat four.
Madam Attorney? Madam Attorney, I don't know if that is...
I didn't understand. I think I understood what you asked, but then I didn't understand the summary. You're saying if, the funds have not been designated in the Bond Implementation Plan by seat, that's number one.
Right.
They've just been allocated to parks for whatever purpose. So if your question is, if the funds are not used for Risco, can they then be reallocated to your district? The answer is yes, but the manager was saying the city council would decide where those funds get allocated.
So that's an inequity. That's an inequity of the distribution of funds. Because if you take an allocation and you put it where, let's say it's not, let's say it's not by any specific residential seat, but if you look at an inequity of the distribution of funds throughout the city, and you equally allocated those funds prior, and those funds are subject to be moved anywhere in the seat, then that's an inequity. And what you end up having is an inequity on the west side of the highway. And the taxpayers on the west side of the highway deserve an equity of the allocation of funds.
Agreed. I mean, that's one way to look at it, but that's something that you all would have to decide. You all would have to vote on that reallocation, because right now the funds have been allocated for Risco.
Madam Attorney, will those funds have to be allocated for that specific program that we asked the community for?
No, it has to be allocated for parks and the police, was it the, what's the name of the police?
Real Time Crime Center.
Not Real Time Crime Center, but police electronic, whatever, license plate readers or whatever is specifically listed in the bond, that money has to be spent for that.
So if it specifically states that it was supposed to be for a STEM program?
The bond does not say that. The plan says that, so you all can change the plan.
Okay.
You know, the plan is your plan, so you could change the plan, but the bond says for parks. Now, I think we did reference when it was, at the time when it was being proposed, that you all did reference that it would be for STEM and all the other things that were referenced, but I don't believe that the bond specifically requires that it be that, but it has to be for parks purposes.
Can you?
Or the police.
Can you guys look into that and let us know?
To see if it's mandated that it be for STEM?
Yes.
Is, okay.
Not only to see if it be mandated for STEM, but to also make a determination that there are other parks that the STEM can go to in residential seat 4. That the money doesn't have to be allocated out of residential seat 4, because essentially what we will become is a desert. Where our park system on that side of the highway will not be sufficient, as it is on the east side of the highway. So I am sure that it was the intention of the council, when the general obligation bond was created, was to create a systemic Parks and Recreation Department that was represented equally across the city, and not inequitably in one area and not in another.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with the point, because the west side, as I've said earlier, has been neglected. And when you look at, when the GOP was done, yes, it's supposed to be used for parks. So, okay, if this is a park, and that we're going to reallocate any dollars anywhere, let's look at Vista Verde, too. That's been a desert, desert. Come on, if we're going to be equitable about it, the west side does need something. It has been neglected and neglected and neglected.
All right, well, we'll revisit that.
I would like to make a motion that at the next meeting, that we give an update and a report on where we stand with this, at the very next meeting. That's what I said, when I said I'd direct the city manager, then he said he needed to get the council's direction. See, that's what I've been talking about.
All right. This item been moved and seconded.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, my apologies. I have two motions on the table. Right now, we have a motion, we have a motion in between the primary motion, that motion made by Vice Mayor Wilson, seconded by Councilwoman Igadaro, for there to be a report at the next meeting on this subject matter. Okay, we handle that motion?
Let's handle that one. Go ahead. Call the roll.
I need some clarification on what the report is going to be, because I don't know if it's, because I can tell you, I can go look at the bond documents tonight and tell you what they say about STEM, but I want to make sure we are clear on what the report is going to entail, all it's going to entail, because some of that sounds like the manager's, some may sound like me. But I can get you the information tomorrow, Vice Mayor.
Do we need the motion, or can we just instruct the manager to provide that report?
Well, she's doing, he's doing the motion, because one person can't direct the manager. You all have to direct the manager as a group.
Okay.
So I think that's why Vice Mayor was doing the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor did do the motion, and Lady Shannon Igadaro seconded. So we...
All right, the clerk is going to call the roll. He just needed some clarity on what we were going to vote on.
Okay.
So go ahead, Mr. Clerk, call the roll on that motion.
All right. Vice Mayor Wilson? This is the motion on the request for the report.
Did you hear me?
All right, there's some confusion.
You need some clarity on...
Yeah, we need some clarity on what the report needs to be, for the purpose of the amendments and for the direction to the charters.
They're asking for a report by the city manager to indicate whether this STEM program has to be done on a certain park, or is that correct?
That the allocations that have been put in the GOP bond, if they do not, if they are not expended on the items as intended, what would be the alternative direction of the expenditures of those GOP? So let's say it's the STEM building, and the STEM building is not able to be built. Would that allocation remain in seat 4? And if it does, what is the recommendation of where the allocation goes? If it is required to be a STEM building, or the monies can be reallocated in a pool, in another kind of facility, or on land, or whatever the case may be, what would be the recommendation of the allocation of those dollars? And where?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, you're staying within that district, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Everybody understand the motion now? It's been seconded, so...
Say that again.
Mr. Clerk, we got the motion?
I have some clarity on the motion.
You have clarity on it?
Yes.
I need clarity now. What's going on? Are we voting on?
It's the report.
The report.
That she wants, yeah.
When we come to the next meeting to get clarity on how we can move forward with allocating those dollars.
If it can be done.
All right.
All right, so on that, on that secondary motion, Vice Mayor Wilson? Councilwoman Julian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darrow?
Yes.
Mayor Harris?
I vote yes.
All right, we're now back on the main motion of the item, which was made by Councilwoman Stevens, seconded by Councilwoman Julian.
Now, what was that motion?
It's to approve the items. Mr. Mayor, you want me to go ahead and call the roll?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Julian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campbell?
As is written, no, I have to say no.
Councilwoman Darrow?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson? Mayor Harris?
I vote yes.
Motion passed 6-1.
Reggie didn't vote.
All right, there, yeah? Oh, sorry, yes. 6-1. All right, we're now, there's no quasi judicial zoning hearing items, we're now on to the reports of the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I just want to point out, 14.1 is the floodplain administrator's report regarding our rating system as a city, as a city. I just want to make sure that you have seen that. And also, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize Officer Richard Robinson for being recognized by the Miami Heat as a hometown hero two weeks ago.
Rich Robb.
With that, I have nothing else.
You going to the Heat game? We should go to the Heat game.
Rich Robb.
Congratulations, Rich. And I have to, I do have an announcement, but I have to say to the Vice Mayor that, you know, I think you might have missed your calling, ma'am. Yeah.
Please don't tell her that, please, please.
That was one of the best closing arguments, that's one of the best closing arguments I've heard, and I'm not saying it as a joke, I mean it. I mean it. But I actually do need to announce, I'm announcing that I plan to call a private attorney-client meeting for a date to be determined in the litigation case of Metalonis and Partners LLC, MP MG LLC, and David Metalonis versus City of Miami Gardens, case number 23-CV-23574-RAR in accordance with Section 286.0118 Florida statutes. And attendance at the meeting will be, attendance at the meeting, my apologies, will be limited to the mayor and city council, the city manager, city attorney, assistant city attorneys, and outside counsel Chad Freeman. And I will give you the date at a later point.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I do have a report today. Mayor, council, as a city clerk, I am the records custodian of the city, so from time to time, as we work to digitize our documents, we come across certain records. And I wanted to bring your attention to this record. On February 11, 2004, the city council approved Resolution 2004-30-81, which appointed Madam Attorney as a city attorney here at the City of Miami Gardens. So I just want to congratulate her, preserving for 20 years as a city attorney here at the City of Miami Gardens. So congratulations, Madam Attorney.
I thought you were about to say that it wasn't no good. See, we better correct that right now.
That's it from my report.
It's been a great 20 years.
Yeah, yeah. Before we start on the reports from the day, I just wanted to recognize our former council member and former Vice Mayor and Senator Oscar Brainerd. You like to add anything, sir? No, you good? All right. All hearts and minds are clear, which is good. All right, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to acknowledge a former senator, the first council member for the best seat there is, and that's seat 6. Good to see you, Oscar.
Nice suit, too.
But I just wanted to, very briefly, because time is far spin as we would say at church, I want to just announce that the Miami Gardens Dream Scholarship Program is open for high school seniors to apply. Please visit our city's webpage, our social media. You have until Friday, April 26 to submit the application. I encourage everyone to, that's eligible to apply for the scholarship. And then our City University partnership is far on the go. We have classes happening at the Betty T. Ferguson Recreational Center with Miami Day College, Florida Memorial is on board, and we're working to roll out programming with St. Thomas University as well. So I wanted to highlight that. Happy Ash Wednesday, as well as Happy Valentine's Day to you all. And I got to highlight one of our residents from the Lake Lucerne community. I was at their crowd watch meeting, and he had a lot of questions. Thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. Welcome to your city hall. That's in my report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Igadaro?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Leon?
I'll be brief. Mr. Adams, I'm going to bring an item at the next meeting, sponsoring $10,000 from my Formula One account to start the beautification process on those walls for those residents over there. So you'll see that coming forward. Chief, I want to apologize to you that we have members, the leaders of this city, that would try to use you as a pawn in playing games with Formula One dollars. And as a professional, I want to take this time out and apologize to you. And we're in a very slippery slope when we attempt to do things like that in the city, and it's not what we do here in Miami Gardens. And I'm going to fine you the $5,000 out of donations account to help you fund your gun buyback. Thank you.
Councilwoman Julian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the ordinance titled School Zone Speed Limit to enhance enforcement of speed limits within our school zones here in Miami Gardens. I want to thank all of the staff who helped on this item diligently, but I especially want to give a big thank you to Assistant City Attorney and Miami Gardens resident Zachary Stokes for your diligence on this item. You recognized how important this item was to me and to our community, and to our kids, and to the parents of this community. You conducted the necessary legal research, you advised me and staff accordingly, and you stayed on top of all deadlines, even when I missed mine. So Zach, your hard work did not go unnoticed on this item. You truly are a gem, and again, thank you.
Zach.
That's right. My colleagues and I have been very vocal about our sentiments as it relates to what we feel may be an unfair surcharge to the residents for this water bill issue that is happening in our city. Some of my colleagues and I have traveled to Tallahassee last month to advocate on your behalf, you, the residents, on behalf of this beautiful city that we call home. And one of the things that we are fighting is this surcharge. And so I just want to commend State Representative Felicia Robinson, who's led the charge in Tallahassee to find a resolution for this surcharge issue, and she is not backing down. I want to thank, I want to thank Rep. Robinson for her hard work and her efforts on this. And we've gotten some really promising reports, and we just hope that this will finally come to fruition so that our residents can get some relief, because this is quality of life. And when your quality of life is disrupted, it just makes a, has a really big issue on living in general. And in addition to that, thank you to all the colleagues in Tallahassee who are in support of this item. And then really quickly, we are in mid Black History Month, and this year's Black History theme is African-Americans in the Arts. As part of my Earn As You Learn initiative, our Black History essay contest is currently open to all Miami Gardens students. We encourage our students to write an essay of no more than 250 words of African-American individuals who inspire them. Let's keep the learning of Black history alive. If you purchased a home in 2023, it is time for you to file your homestead exemption by March 1 of 2024. If you need more information, reach out to my office. And lastly, on February 20, my office is hosting a Dinner and Learn on How to Save Your Home. This will take place at The Oasis, right up the street, at 640 Northwest 183rd Street. You are required to RSVP. This is an important conversation. We have joining us on the panel, the clerk of court and comptroller from Miami Dade County, Juan Fernandez Barquín. His office, if you don't know, handles all cases dealing with deed fraud and property fraud. And so we'll hear directly from him. We'll also hear from some experts as it relates to reverse mortgages and foreclosure. So you don't want to miss this event. Everything that I mentioned can be found on the city's platforms, and you can call my office for more information. Let's all be proactive so that we don't fall victim to these costly situations, and happy Valentine's Day to you all. That ends my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First, I want to thank the chief for speaking on behalf of the gun buyback, and from coming from me personally, coming from a father who's been in law enforcement for many moons and who you personally worked under, I would never use you and anyone else as a pawn. And I want to make sure the residents, those of you that are watching on TV, that y'all paying attention. Make sure you paying attention to what you are witnessing here yourselves. All right. And I do pledge, I will get you also a sponsor for the gun buyback. I'm not even worried about it. That's how the Campbells roll. Now, I want to address one more thing, and then I'm going to move on. F1 dollars should be used for community initiatives. The gun buyback is just one said initiative. It is for the residents of Miami Gardens. More importantly, it is to get guns off the street. Now, if you're not with that, that's cool. You showing people who you really are. You don't care about the residents, you yourself are using the residents as pawns. The next thing, the Fair Chance Initiative, which seat 1 was denied. That was for returning citizens here in Miami Gardens, another initiative that the residents can benefit from. You, again, have shown that you do not support the residents of Miami Gardens. So who's being the pawn? I have an AI workshop Thursday in partnership with the Ted Lucas Foundation. It has been absolutely enlightening to me, because I'm learning some things about technology. So I'm appreciative of it. We have our next class, which is tomorrow night at Betty T., 6 o'clock. Be there, and you will learn a lot. Be there and you will learn a lot about AI and technology. My town hall is still via Zoom. It will be on next Tuesday. It's always the third Tuesday, 6:30. Tune in. You can call my office to get the credentials, but I do believe the City of Miami Gardens PR department is blasting out the code for you to log in. Log in because we're gearing up for that time again with Jazz in the Gardens. So come on, so when we have some fun on my Zoom, we're going to be looking forward to supporting that event as well. Also, seniors, y'all been asking and asking and asking. I told y'all, hold on, wait a minute, give me a moment. April 27, mark your calendars. I am hosting the Senior Cooking with Love again. So we got about 12 chefs locked and loaded. They are super excited about coming over to Miami Gardens and celebrating and loving on you. And it's for Miami Gardens residents, seniors only. All right. And I got something special planned for the seniors that day. Y'all know I like to give stuff away, so if you were at the last one, I'm stepping it up a notch. So come on out. Lastly, I want to say, let's continue positive forward progress. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
And I want to tell you that it was, in fact, a stellar, stellar event. I want to say congratulations to the winner, that's Miss Miami Gardens Autumn Simone. And I also want to do a special shout out to NBC television anchor, Tavoris Jones. He authored this event, planned it from start to finish. And when I tell you that it was of top-notch caliber, I am looking forward to next year when this pageant comes back again. And I am looking forward to more of our residents participating in this wonderful event. And then on Monday, I hosted my monthly Meet Me Monday meeting with our residents. And I was, we had a special performance by the jazz band of the nationally, nationally ranked ESP Band of the Year, Florida Memorial University. Their jazz band is impeccable. And we're going to have them again and I'm going to invite you guys out specifically to see these young people really play music. I'm talking about music that is not synthesized. And it's very, very important because music is so much a part of our culture. So I want to thank you all for your continued support. I want to even thank you especially for listening this evening. And I looked at your faces and I saw that you were really listening with your ears and your heart. So on Valentine's Day, I also want to say to you, love each other. Doesn't always have to be your wife, but love your children, love your friends, but love each other. Give love today. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sit down. Sit down because I, we, I listen to you, you got to listen to me. I don't have a report. I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, not Thanksgiving, I'm sorry. Happy Valentine's Day. I wish you all the best. May God bless and continue to keep Miami Gardens and you all as residents. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Been moved and seconded. Show the meeting adjourned.